Would the city clerk please take your role?
Here.
Here.
Herman.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
Mugrower.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
Present seven. Would you all please stand while council member Crozey leads us in the location followed by the pledge of allegiance.
We come together this evening to discuss the issues that confront our city. May we always seek the wisdom to do things that reflect our concern for the people who we represent.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Young ladies want to stay right there, we have a certificate for you. Your name, your age, where you go to school, and now is a great time for one day what you like two weeks from today on Christmas.
I'm Lydia, I go to Washington University, I'm 11 years old and...
Nikki, questions for you. Your name, your age, where you go to school, and what you'd like to sound as a brand of Christmas.
My name is Miki, I go to Jefferson County School.
And... And Tina, I'm 10 years old and I go to elementary and... Wow, they're telling you kids, obviously, because they don't know what's going on. Thank you. This is the first chance for citizens to make statements to the council. Pam, is anyone registered?
No one is registered.
We'll move on to consent agenda, and these items are those of routine administrative of nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll call vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request an item be removed from the consent agenda for discussion. Is anyone registered?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Here. For a question.
Herman.
Mr. Davis, Resolution 18-581, can you just give us a little more information about why the RDA is wanting to give up their authority to the Marion Road?
The RDA still owns those properties, so they're not giving up ownership. It's just the lease between the RDA and the city and US Bank when we did lease revenue bonds. We've retired those lease revenue bonds a few years ago, and these existing leases still show up on the title, so we want to clear that up so it doesn't cause problems for actually selling these down the road.
Okay, so the debt that we had on the properties is taken care of?
Those are all, that's all been repaid.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I got one more. Chief Stanley, Resolution 18-582, the ambulance agreement, anything significant that we need to know? I know it's in agreement with all the different townships and the city of Amro and the village of Winnicott County and that.
No, it's still the 11 townships and municipalities that we had pre-existing agreements with, so this is a renewal. There was the per capita increase, but other than that substantively, it's still the same.
Okay, have we, have we seen the rise of calls go up in those areas at all, do you know, since you've been here?
We have not, really. They've maintained pretty much the status quo.
So the ambulance crews that we have are sufficient to cover that in the calls in the city?
At this time, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other further questions? Would you please take a roll?
Crozey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
We have one pending ordinance, which is ordinance 18-588, approve parking regulation changes on Sunnyview Road and Burns County Road Y and on West Lincoln Avenue. Pam, did anyone register?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take, please take the roll.
Crozey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
We have two new ordinances. Initially, there was to be no formal action taken on either one, but we will be taking action this evening. The first is ordinance 18-589, approve a zone change from suburban mixed-use district SMU to suburban mixed-use district with a planned development overlay in Perrin's. SMU-PD, and close Perrin's at 1755 West 7th Avenue. Plan commission recommends approval, but the petitioner is requesting waiving a second reading. Would anyone like to make a motion?
No. We have a citizen. John Davids, 1560 Arboretum Drive.
Can you see me back there?
Yep.
My name is John Davids. I am hoping to purchase that property, subject to approval on the proposal here. My wife and I, Julie, operate a business called Home Care Assistance. We do non-medical supportive care for seniors in their own homes. We've been in business for about three years, and we've outgrown our current site, which is at 1092 South Keller, literally across the road behind Walgreens and between Little Caesar's and Selcom. The location that we're seeking to buy is the former AE Jewelers, and we are a franchisee of Home Care Assistance, and they approved that location with some conditions on the signage, which is what we had requested in this, and worked with the plan commission and the plan development office to meet something that was suitable for everybody. I've also met with the neighbors that were looking for some landscaping enhancements that would knock out, knock down the light that currently hits their homes, and at the conclusion of that meeting, we agreed to modify our landscaping plan to put a hedgerow in that will meet their, meet their needs. So we are hopeful that tonight we can get approval on this and waive the second reading. The current owner of the property is River One Development. Andy Dumke is one of the owners, and Randy Schmedel, they are looking, they hold a, I'm not going to use, the terminology escapes me, but they are looking to file a deed restriction that would prevent some unsavory businesses such as pawn shops, pornography places, things like that, that we would support and encourage that to be filed upon us, becoming the owners of that property. And they are eager to close before the first of the year. We're eager to close as soon as possible as we have a lease that ends on January 29th, and we would need every bit of that time to get the build-out done that's required so that we can move in unencumbered by January 29th. And that concludes my statements.
Any, any questions of this gentleman?
Just one question, clarification. So the owners have, are requesting of that property or nearby properties to be restricted from those undesirable uses?
That, that property.
That property.
Yeah. So I understand there was once upon a time an offer from someplace that nobody would have liked to go there, and this would mitigate that from happening again.
Well, it's good news that it's growing to the point that they need a new location.
Yeah, thank you.
Are there any further questions in the petition or while he's up here? Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes?
I would move to waive the rules and to consider this on the first reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Would you please take a roll?
Crozey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Then I would move for approval. Ordinance 18-59, we need a second.
Second.
Discussion. Please take a roll.
I just was going to comment, it was nice to see that both the Chamber of Commerce as well as GOHNI both sent letters of support in regards to this, so that was pretty neat.
Would you please take a roll?
Crozey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Ordinance 18-590, approve revision to chapter 25, Streets and Sidewalk. Staff recommends waiving the rules and adopting on the first reading. Anyone?
No one is registered.
We need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to waive the rules and adopt on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take a roll?
Crozey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Any motion on ordinance 18-590?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take a roll?
Crozey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
We have new resolutions. The first is Resolution 18-591, approve agreement with the Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods Incorporated, their nose goal, HNI. Pam?
Yes, Pam Ruder, 1537 Rugby Street.
Hello, I'm not here to talk at length on the agreement, I'm here to say thank you for the past two and a half years on behalf of GOHNI. I am the new executive director as of June. I also have with me tonight a few of our board members, Art Rathgen, Bill Wyman, Tom Potek over here and a couple over there as well. We, at GOHNI, are quite simply excited about the potential for the next three years and this new agreement with the city of Oshkosh. We think we're headed in a good direction. We've gained a lot of traction within our neighborhood associations, both with getting new neighborhood associations recognized and bringing the other ones that maybe haven't been as active back into the mix. So a new focus, a new, new energy within the organization. We think we've got a strong partnership with the city of Oshkosh. The agreement speaks for itself. I think we have done good things in the past, but we're looking forward to even more. I did hand out one thing that is very new with the GOHNI, and that is our Rock the Block Oshkosh partnership with Habitat for Humanity. As we speak, applications are being accepted for the April event that is going to happen here in Oshkosh in the Sacred Heart Neighborhood Association. Really nice energy happening there as well. We had two town hall meetings and got the neighborhood to come and tell us their needs. And so our organization working in that partnership from the ground up really is doing what we set out to do, and that's strengthen neighborhoods here in Oshkosh. So again, not going to go out at length unless you have any questions, happy to answer those.
Thank you, Pam. Does anyone have any questions?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Yes, Ms. Ruder, welcome. Again, I know this is your first year with GOHNI, and you inherited quite a task, being that they're new and there have been some challenges, and there's been some great successes with additions of neighborhoods and that. I noticed that there was an acknowledgement of some of those challenges with the redevelopment renovations. Looks like of the goals that were set, about a 30% achievement based on two houses out of the six that were expected in the three-year period. And I guess the other thing is, you know, measuring the success when it looks like the goal of adding more neighborhood associations on, on the surface may seem to be a measure of success, but the strengthening of those existing neighborhood associations and that community building and engagement going beyond the just acknowledgement. So I guess I'm just asking, you know, what kind of market analysis, what kind of, this is a big ask, $100,000 and a three-year contract. Maybe you could speak to some of those things.
I think where you were looking at the downside was our real estate development category. We have three business lines with GOHNI, the community, community building and engagement, which is the neighborhood association development, and that side we hit all of those marks and then some. The real estate development, the challenges are real as far as we've got a real estate committee that is looking at properties frequently. We just haven't found the right fit yet as far as within the last couple of months, but the reality in, in April, we did sell the house on Bowen. They did exactly what they set out to do, which was, took a 2016 assessed property value of 80,000, 85,000 approximately, and in 2018 then sold it for 119,000. So raising the value of that property not only increased the tax on that property, but the rest of the neighborhood, that's the impact that we're really looking at. And measuring those, yes, there are some metrics out there. We're working with the planning department within the city to try and get a better handle before and after, and I think this Rock the Block is going to give us a really good tool for that, going in and seeing, did property values, number one, increase? That's something that we are looking at. But as far as the real estate development, those other challenges beyond just finding the property, then those contractors that are tied up for several months, and those construction costs are increasing as well. So we're working at it, and I can tell you that we are in a position to make that purchase and make those improvements when the right property comes along.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Would you please take a roll?
Other people registered?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No one else is registered.
Oh, okay. If I could just...
It's got to come back to council for a motion.
It does.
And move for approval of 18-591.
A second?
Second.
Discussion.
We've seen some great success with GOHNI. We've invested a lot of money. There are some exciting things coming on the horizon. But I, again, I do think this is a big ask for a three-year contract based on a limited success rate. If we're defining community building and engagement by simply adding additional neighborhood associations that we may or may not be fully servicing, I would, I guess, ask fellow council members if they would entertain an amendment from three years to one year to see how the next year presents in terms of Rock the Block and some of the other things, in light of the fact that there has been significant investment, but we don't still have a full measurement of where those dollars have truly impacted strengthening neighborhoods. I absolutely don't want to discourage, but I think that we need to be a bit more prudent in, perhaps limited in scope with the contract.
Can I speak to that or not?
It's at the council portion of the meeting.
My motion is to amend the resolution to the agreement for one year instead of three.
Do we have a second?
Can I ask a question in the agreement before I make a second on it?
No. No.
I'll withdraw the motion at the moment.
So my question was on the agreement on page four, it says, the compensation, the city shall pay HNI $100,000 per year. The city has the ability to withhold funding should HNI fail to meet annual production targets as indicated within this agreement. Can someone elaborate on that to me? Because it seems like it is a year-to-year thing if we can say no to it.
Yes, given notice, and the one concern I'd have off the top of my head about limiting it to a one-year, yes, we can limit it. If you wanted to make it just one year, then I think it would make it an even harder ask for the other funders, other donors, to want to make a commitment to GOHNI, because I think a lot of outside sources look at the city and see what the city's commitment is versus what kind of commitment they would want to make. And I think a three-year agreement sends us a stronger message, easier ask for private funding, which we're still trying to ramp up at GOHNI as well.
So if they don't meet their annual, annual production targets, it's up to us to give them the $100,000 the following year or that year?
That is correct.
So it is basically year-to-year?
We could, if they fail to meet the production targets, we could put this on the agenda and cancel the agreement, is my interpretation.
Thank you.
Mr. Davis, would you agree that in the last several years, there's been discussion about market analysis and property, looking at some of the property values, and that for the last two and a half years, that has been one of the elements at looking at some of the successes, and even prior to that during the NeighborWorks tenure and similar contracts?
Yes, in fact, that's part of the real estate investment criteria that GOHNI, we required them to create and use, and they have used that in the previous projects to identify those properties that have the greatest potential to increase their value and the neighborhood. And I remember the analysis that we did prior to those two projects on Bowen certainly showed we raised the bar when it came to the property values. I would love to have seen them do six and do more of them, but then we're talking about can you get the properties at the right purchase price, and can you put the right investments in to get, to raise the bar for that block or that neighborhood? And that's the fine line that I guess you're almost threading a needle, not going after a property that's too blighted, that's going to take too much money to rehab, so that you can still increase the average for the neighborhood, but not so much where you can't, you're going to lose 50 or $100,000. GOHNI couldn't handle that type of effect. So I do expect that GOHNI is going to invest what they need to raise the bar, but no more than they actually have to. So the bar will be raised, and they've raised it on each project, we just haven't done enough.
So are you confident then that along the three lines of service, if you will, that the expansion of additional neighborhoods, recognition or associations, that the energy is focused there and increasing that may not spread them a little thin in being able to address the other end of this, which is the true, I guess, kind of outcome that we were looking for?
We've talked about this at the board level at GOHNI, that it's great to keep the, creating neighborhood associations, but as many people have pointed out, some are more active than others, and we definitely have said we want to get those that are less active, more active. So I think the board and staff agreed that is something that GOHNI can do over the next year.
Thank you.
Is anyone else wishing to make a comment?
Did it get moved? Okay, yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm going to support the resolution. I was here when we had NeighborWorks out of Racine, and that was a total disaster. We lost money on that deal, I think, in the end, for the city. So since the work of HNI coming forward and being organized and slowly building the coalition and getting partnerships and that, I think it's, it's done a lot in its short period of time. Sure, we want to see more, we've always liked to see more. But when I look at the fiscal impact, the funds are budgeted and the adopted budget are ready by the city under the Healthy Neighborhood Initiatives. $100,000 comes from additional TIF funds the city's generated, and there's no impact on the general fund. So I think to Mr. Davis's point, a three-year commitment, I think it's a good investment of our money, and I think it's a good investment into our neighborhoods, and it helps just keep that neighborhood initiative going, and I think Rock the Block is just another one that will hopefully take hold, and knowing a lot of the board or directors that are on the HNI, I think that they'll be out there working hard to make this a very successful program for, for the city of Oshkosh. And I think it's valuable even to the, to the different departments, you know, when we had our workshop earlier tonight, you know, the police department, the fire department. I think it's important to have quality neighborhoods, quality housing in our neighborhoods, and this is just one more step to help revitalize some of our older neighborhoods in the city and make the quality of life in Oshkosh that, that much better. And for those reasons, I will support this three-year contract for HNI with the city of Oshkosh. Thank you, Mayor.
Just one comment, and I'll put my former realtor hat on. Using property values alone is very dangerous. We all know what happened in 2008, 2009, property values crashed. The market is hot right now, and I can guarantee you, something's going to happen, and values will either flatten out or they're going to start sliding down. So that's a very dangerous tool to use because it is so volatile. It's going to be looked at over, it's sort of like stocks, I mean, over, you're investing the long-term future of the neighborhood, the community, that type of thing. And I'm involved, obviously, on the board of GOHNI, and it's, it's been very hard to get contractors on some of these houses because the market's so hot, it's, it's like pulling teeth to get things done, so. And we've taken on some very challenging properties, and the most serious one on Bowen Street was, was a phenomenal eyesore until we stepped in. So again, I don't look at this, it's a rolling, it's a rolling 12-month program. You don't start the house in January 1, on December 31st, it's done, let's move on. It's, it's a long-term project, a long-term commitment, so I'm obviously very much in support of this. With that said, does anyone else wish to speak?
Pam?
Crozey.
Aye.
Pack.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Paul Mary.
No.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried six, one.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you.
Resolution 18-592, approve recovery agreement between Oshkosh Housing Authority, the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, and the city of Oshkosh. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor? Yep.
Go ahead.
I guess I don't know if Director City Manager Roloff or City Attorney Lawrenceon, but one of you can chime in if you would like to. Reading through this, this is a little bit unnerving that US Housing and Urban Development has, has classified some of these as troubled, and the action plan itself, some of the, some of the assessments in here are concerning given, given what they're pointing out here. And I'm wondering, were some of the risks that the Housing Authority Board, as well as the management of the Housing Authority took, were those, were those calculated risks? Or were... Or were those risks that they didn't know were going to get them in trouble?
Mr. Mayor, could I, Ms. Hillsback, could you, you could probably answer Mr. Mugerauer's questions.
Hi, Sue Van Holligan, do you want me to spell last name or anything? Okay, I'm the executive director of the Oshkosh Housing Authority. I will try to make this simple. The problem, what arose was, as all of you, most of, I think everyone knows, we renovated Court Tower, that was public housing. We renovated Ralph Place, that was public housing. Those two entities are now owned by a limited liability company. And for some unknown reason, and I can't explain it, that is no longer scored by HUD. So previously, we have what are called asset management programs. So you have Court Tower, which has a number, Ralph Place has a number, our 70 scattered sites have a number, Court Tower actually has two numbers now because it's entities. But anyways, so those were always scored together. And so we were always standard performer, doing fine. You take the two big buildings out of that, and you're down to the 70 scattered sites. 70 units out of our over 1,100 together that we manage. And HUD came in and scored just those 70 units. We're also, we're no longer getting enough operating subsidy to run that program, bottom line. But the Housing Authority is putting in non-federal dollars into that program. And what had happened in this, if you look, it is 2016. And HUD just now this year came on board to talk to us about this. I have disputed several items in that. They talk about, you know, we didn't do our write-offs on time, yeah, we did. I've responded now to that big, long list of things, and that is only our 70 scattered sites. We get public, we get operating subsidy and capital fund dollars to fund public housing. That's been going down over the years. We did not have enough cash sitting in the bank to cover, we didn't have enough assets to cover the liabilities. And that's where we lost all 20 points of the point system. So that was the biggest, the biggest issue. The, we were, the other part that I really think is important to point out, we had a 95% occupancy rate. And some of you know, before I came to the Housing Authority 18 years ago, I was in the private sector management. We used to get bonuses and merit to keep our properties at 95%. That's not good enough for HUD, we lost, I think, at least four points for that. We also had a 2% tenant accounts receivable, or, and what means that 2% of our tenants owed us money, basically. Again, that's just unrealistic, we're housing extremely low families. We're not going to kick them out if they owe us money. So there tends to be pay arrangements and things like that that is in that mix. And I've been very open with our board since day one that that may not ever go away. I'm not going to get to that 100% where we don't have any debt from the tenants because that's not our goal, our goal is to keep people housed. So I think the most important part of this is that the council, you realize that this is just 70 units out of our portfolio of almost 1,100 units. And that's the only thing on the Oshkosh Housing Authority side was scored. So if we would take Court Tower, put it back in, we would take Ralph Place and put it back in, we would score in about, about 84% if we could have still put those together. So, yes, it's not a good thing, it sounds really horrible, to be really honest. And they require a recovery agreement, which we've entered into. And we've, I'm actually, I think some of those deadlines or dates on there are January of 2019. And I've really gotten almost everything to them that they want. HUD Milwaukee has been really good, they're basically just doing their job because they're getting pressure also from Washington because nobody wants to see any agencies troubled. But I will tell you, and I don't know the number exact, but in, I've been with the Housing Authority over 18 years, and there are many housing authorities right now that are in that status because they're not getting enough operating subsidy, you know, to support their programs. And the government is expecting us, fortunately, we have, we have funds to put in there. One of the reasons for 2016 that that money wasn't in there is because we were a little bit worried about Ralph Place because that's when that had a lot of vacancies. And so we infused funds into that and truthfully missed the boat a little bit, making sure there was enough cash in the 70 scattered sites. That's not going to be an issue now, going forward.
You bring up the payment, the payment agreements and the payment plans. And I appreciate you bringing that up because that's one of, one of the few things on here that they point out a couple of times, that the inability of the OHA to track those agreements and provide, and provide reporting back on that. And that's concerning that, that things aren't being tracked. This is money coming in that they're saying OHA isn't properly tracking funds that are owed to them.
They could not go into our software and click a button and a poof, a report came out. We have those reports, I have those reports. Unfortunately, our software is lacking in a good system. And that, they actually were just bought out by another company, so that'll be improving in itself too. But I mean, I have monthly manager meetings, we have meetings all the time. We take this information to the board. We do have write-offs at the end of the year, people that move out that owe us money, it gets written off. But we are, we do, every single property manager has their report, and then they report to me. But it wasn't a button that they could push in our software to get that report. And we're working on it, it's still, but we are on top of that.
One final question, going back to my original question for staff. Was this a calculated risk or was it something you knew that would occur by moving those? When those projects were taken on, those were transferred over to LLCs, was that a calculated risk to do so? Or was that something that it wasn't aware to staff and to the board that you would be getting slapped on the wrist pretty well here?
I don't think, if we had not done the renovations of those two buildings, you'd be sitting with some blighted properties. It was a risk we had to take to use tax credits, historic tax credits, to put funding into those units. Did I miss that step with the 70 fam? Yes, I did. It was something that was missed in December to make sure we had infused enough non-federal dollars into that program, or even some of the capital funds. You'll see that they're requiring, that we always, you know, look at that, which we are. And I can tell you, excuse me, for 2017, while we don't have our full score out yet because HUD's behind, instead of getting a zero on our financial, we can see our financial score and we got 20. So just those 20 points alone would bring us up to 77, plus all the other things. So I'm not sure if I really answered, I mean, it was a risk we had to take. Did we miss the boat a little bit on these 70 scatters and not getting enough money in the, in the bank? Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Van Holligan, or were you going to jump in?
I was just going to ask you, as the closing is already up, if you could answer some.
And I apologize, I had a temporary brain fade when I introduced you earlier. You know, it's tough getting old, you know. The, regarding the, I agree, the information related to the accounts receivable, that information is indeed shared with the Housing Authority Boards. That information is incorporated in our minutes. Any city council member could review that information in the city minutes. You are correct in that basically, that the Fed, that HUD wanted basically to be able to, literally, it was almost literally to be able to come in and say, you know, show me a report, the information is available. Yes, you are correct. And this is a situation where, you know, like you say, your operating subsidy is getting less and less and less, and you're expected to do more and more and more and more. You cannot go out and purchase new software to have that ability. The information is there, the accounting department knows what they're doing, the managers know what they're doing. And, but, but the, one of the key things, one of the key takeaways is, and this is something we deal with at the city level, is the governmental agencies above us expect us to do more and more and more and more and more. But the programs that they mandate upon us, they do not, the funding does not follow through. It's, you know, it's rather interesting that that happens that way. So the key, the takeaway is, the information is available, any council person can get that information. Anyone can get it at any time. It's just a matter of that because of the limitations of the software that you have, you were not able to give it in the exact form that HUD wanted it, at the time that they wanted it. And, you know, your agency does a wonderful job in meeting the needs of our, of the citizens that you serve. Thank you.
Thank you, so. I'll bring it back. Pam, did anyone else sign up to speak to this?
No one signed up.
Thank you.
Is it moved in second?
Yes, it's moved in second.
I will take a vote, would you please take the roll?
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pal Mary?
Aye.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 18-593, approve specific implementation plan for a commercial office, 1755 West 7th Avenue. Plan Commission recommends approval. Pam?
No one has signed up.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please take the roll.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pal Mary?
Aye.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 18-594, approve specific implementation plan, plan amendment request for vehicle sales at 1911 West Snell Road. Plan Commission recommends approval. Has anyone registered to speak to this resolution?
No one is registered.
Mr. Mayor? I'm answering. Lynn, do you want to speak or?
I've got it.
Do you want us to lay this over?
Yeah, go ahead. Mr. Mayor, based on staff approval, I would make a motion to refer this back to the Plan Commission per the applicant's request.
Second.
Any discussion? Would you please take the roll?
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pal Mary?
Aye.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Moving on to Resolution 18-595, adopt City of Oshkosh Go Transit Transit Development Plan 2018. Has anyone registered?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Crowsey? I just had a question. When you guys developed this plan, was there ever consideration for the free bus for kids in the city of Oshkosh?
Yeah, we did have Sue Schnorr, the business manager for the school district, was on our steering committee. And we did have some discussions about it. But it's still in the hands of the school districts to come back with what they propose. As you may recall, I mean, there's still, I think everybody's in agreement that we'd like to do that. But there's a $50,000 approximately revenue gap there that, you know, as the city, we're not in a position to take that on, and the school district's not in a position to take that on. So the last that I had talked to them, they were going to talk with their board and then come back and let us know when they had some type of proposal.
Yeah, just a personal comment, opinion. In the whole grand scheme of things, it's a small amount of money compared to what we throw around on a every-other-week basis on some situations. I just feel like there's a lot of time being wasted on it where we could just give to the most important people of the city, the children, so, just my opinion.
That's a decision for the council. It was considered as part of the plan and it's basically, however, that revenue gap is, is going to be accounted for, whether that's the school district, city, combination. But as you see with our, with our next item, I mean, we only really have a couple sources of funds. We have the federal government, which, the state government, which their funding is level or decreasing. Same with, the federal government transportation budget went up a little bit this year. However, the needs basically greatly outweighed with the little increase. And then obviously, you know what the city levy is. So either the city pays or the riders pay is kind of what we're left with because we don't really have a lot of control, although we do lobby for federal and state funding. And in order to provide free busing to those students, that's about $50,000 in revenue that we would forego. And I do understand that the school district is raising some money for bus passes. I know that they provide them to students in need, so there is an option out there. I know that, I just, you know, with my, having a student at Oshkosh West, I know that they just sent out a request for donations for bus passes to help above and beyond whatever need isn't being met. But hopefully that answers where we're at.
Any other questions for council? Would you please take the roll?
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pal Mary?
Aye.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Let's have Resolution 18-596, did anyone register?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Ms. Mayor.
Deputy Mayor Pal Mary.
Mr. Collins, just a question for you. So I don't know if other council members received an email or not, but one of our advisory board members had emailed and asked that I bring up an increase that seniors would experience. And I think there might be some misinformation because as I'm looking at the proposed fares, we're looking at the cash fare of $1.50, but seniors would still only be 75 cents, is that right?
Yes, so how that works is there's the fixed route fare, and then there's what's called a half fare. So for seniors, so they call it elderly and disabled. So the rate for seniors and disabled is half the fixed route fare, so it'd be 75 cents if the fixed route fare is $1.50.
So that is not going up a dollar for seniors?
No, it's going up 25 cents.
Okay.
It's currently 15 and 75, and that's actually federally mandated, we don't have control.
Sure, sure, okay, just wanted to get that clarification out there.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Crowsey?
Can you tell us about the fare increase and how we're going to compare to other cities? And if it's a good value still?
Sure, yeah, I mean, it's, it's still an excellent value. I mean, currently, there's Stevens Point and us are at $1, which is the lowest fare in the state. So going to $1.50 will be in line with Fond du Lac, Green Bay, Valley Transit's at $2, if I remember correctly. So we're still going to be tied for, I believe, second lowest in the state. So it's still a very good value. And then even with our monthly pass going from $25 to $35, I mean, if there's somebody that rides a lot, that's, I mean, you can ride as much as you want with that pass. So that is a good value as well.
Thank you.
Any further questions, Mr. Collins? Would you please take the roll?
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pal Mary?
Aye.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 18-597, just in case. Authorize the filing by, filing by Go Transit of 2019 FTA and Wistat Operating and Capital Assistance Grants, as well as County Transportation Assistance. Did anyone register to speak to this?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Would you please take the roll?
Crowsey?
Thanks, Jim.
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Pal Mary?
Aye.
Mugerauer?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Resolution 18-598, approve fee schedule for sewer use charges. Has anyone registered to speak, registered to speak? Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Ms. Larson and Mr. Cameron. We've seen all of the figures on this, could you just give us the, give the citizens the 30,000-foot view of what this is? That these are not just increases to increase, these are increases to assure that services continue and that we have the ability to operate.
Could you just give us the, give the citizens the thirty-thousand-foot view of what this is? That these are not just increases to increase, these are increases to assure that services continue and that we have the ability to operate into the future.
Correct. Good evening, everyone. This is part of a long-range plan that we've been performing for the city for the last approximately five years. This is a planned increase that you've incorporated into your adopted budget for the sewer utility for next year. The purpose of the study is to perform, take that recommended increase to revenue and perform a detailed cost of service study to make sure that the rates are fair and equitable to all customer classes and that they are not discriminatory in nature at all. In terms of the nature of the increase, you know, we're always being aware of the city's obligation to meet existing revenue bond debt service coverage ratios, looking at detailed projections for flows and loadings for the upcoming year, being cognizant of declining flows over the past several years, and ensuring that user rates will be adequate to fund all operations of the utility going into two thousand and nineteen.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just one, Ms. Larson. We're going to, just, I know we've talked about it at budget, and I think it, you'll be sent out some notes, but there's going to be some changes in the monthly billing sometime in nineteen? I just mentioned.
I would love to. So, the utility is going forward with the implementation of our Munis billing system. We are rolling that out and starting our implementation, our go-live in March, so all customers will see their first monthly billing in April. That will allow the customers to also now receive email billing. So, if you do want to get your bill electronically, you can be contacting the city utility right now and signing up for that. And we're also looking at the ACH bill payment system and hoping that more customers will utilize that payment option for their monthly bill.
Do we also have, do we allow any kind of budget planning for families that may be on a limited budget? Do we amortize, like, over the year, they can pay so much every month, or however we would do that?
So, at this point, we do not offer, like, a budget bill. However, we do offer customers deferred payment arrangements, and customers are able to come in weekly or monthly, or at their, you know, their ability to come in and make payments on their account. They do not need a bill in order to make a payment.
Okay, thank you.
Just a follow-up.
Deputy Mary.
If I could. So, it's been at least two years that the monthly budget, or the monthly billing has been worked on. Congratulations on that. I guess my only other question is, so, we're looking at a twenty-eight dollar on an average residential use annual basis for that increase. So, average is based on, is there a particular household size that that's based on, like a family of four, or a household of four?
Usage based on about fifty thousand gallons a year, forty to fifty thousand gallons.
So, okay, it's based on the volume. All right, thank you. So, twenty-eight dollars, folks, is about what we're looking at for an increase.
Yep, that is a really good way to look at it. So, about seven dollars and twenty cents per quarter for an average user of the utility.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Would you take the roll.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck? Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Muberauer?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Period seven.
Resolution eighteen dash five nine nine, establish twenty nineteen stormwater utility rates to one eighty-four point oh eight ERU per year.
Anyone sign up to speak to this?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the roll.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck? Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Muberauer?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Period seven.
Resolution eighteen dash five nine nine, establish twenty nineteen stormwater utility rates to one eighty-four point oh eight ERU per year.
Next, we have council discussion, direction of the city manager and future agenda items. The first is a workshop, which is City Hall and Parks Facility Workshop, January sixteen of two thousand and nineteen. Excuse me, at five thirty, is five thirty correct? We usually do five.
Yeah, we decided on five thirty to make sure everybody could get here.
Next, I have recruitment of boards and commission members, and this is something we've all talked about continuously, about the need to fill our numerous boards and commissions, gives people a chance to really serve the community in the process, learn more about the community. Depending on your interest, we have things such as a landmark commission, which is more of a historical bent. We have Parks Board, museum boards, library boards, long-range finance, library board, and so forth. Right now, we do have openings on three, on four boards. The first is the redevelopment authority, second is stormwater utility, third is long-range finance, and the fourth is library. And the one caveat is, you do have to be a resident of the city of Oshkosh. The only exception is the library board, and you must be a resident of the city of Oshkosh or one of the adjacent townships. It's easy to learn more, just go onto the city's website, you can apply online, but I encourage everyone to, if you have an interest in these areas, an interest in serving your community and being part of our really progressive, long-range growth pattern, check the city's website, so. We do have openings, because there's, openings are occurring all the time. Next, residential and commercial vacant building registration. Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to bring up to council something that I had spoken to staff with previously, and more recently, it came to my attention that Janesville has adapted a residential and commercial vacant building registry. And the purpose of that is to basically prevent blight, right? Prevent blight, not necessarily reacting to it. So, blight in the form of languishing vacant buildings, either residential that's been deemed uninhabitable, or commercial that, for whatever reason, has not turned over. And, you know, we spend a lot of money addressing blight in our city, and in some cities, they have gone this way. When I worked in Milwaukee, the vacant building registry allowed for a tool for the city to be able to control some of that vacancy blight. So, as we spend money on addressing it on the reactive end, this could be another tool to pursue, and I would like to know if council has an interest at this time in putting that on a future agenda for a little more detail. Mr. Zarotti and I to speak, and Mr. Davis, I assume that's come to your attention. Ms. Verge?
Oh, yes. It's something that staff talks about quite frequently, because it is, it is quite the challenge when it comes to maintaining the property maintenance on some of these vacant buildings, and lack of contacts and lack of ownership even is a problem. So, I think if staff had their druthers, we'd have something like this already in effect.
And it's, it can vary in form from registration within thirty days of a building becoming vacant. Some communities wait, you know, sixty days, ninety days, and there's a fee attached after that period of time. Janesville, for example, has some exceptions if the market, if the property is being actively marketed, or construction is going on. So, there are some, you know, allowances there. I guess I just want to share the story as to how Janesville came about this. Apparently, the FBI wanted a list of vacant properties as they were searching for, I can't remember the gentleman's name, and Janesville wasn't able to give that to them as they were searching for this person. And so, through various other records, they were able to kind of come up with this list. And I'm not saying that we would ever be in that situation, and I hope we wouldn't, but it is something I'd like to know if council would be interested in entertaining at a later date.
Mayor? Just a comment off that. Mr. Davis, do you know, is there any state statute regulating any of this type of registry? I mean, you know, we ran in all the roadblocks with the rental inspection program. I'd hate to have to run into a whole bunch of roadblocks on a program like this.
It's a common feature around the state. I would, I have not looked into the state statute that dictates what can and can't be done with that, but it's something that other communities have done, and I know my staff has gathered those ordinances in the past, because we've seriously looked at those, because vacant buildings have become a problem in Oshkosh.
Yeah, and I, yeah.
Twenty seventeen was in Janesville, did that?
I don't have a problem with it, I just don't want to have what happened with us with the rental inspection program, and spend all our time and effort and everything, and then we just get a whole bunch of roadblocks from Madison.
I think the answer, the short answer is not yet.
Not yet. So, I suppose the rental inspection, or the rental people will probably get, because a lot of those properties are owned by LLCs and businesses outside the city of Oshkosh.
I wouldn't let it deter council.
But residential, though, isn't that, that's kind of, we kind of know that through the tax bill, don't we, already? What homes are vacant, or at least in foreclosure?
We at least know what the mailing address is, but we don't necessarily know how, what the status of their ownership is.
Yeah.
And certainly whether they're paying taxes or not.
Yeah, well, I think it makes sense. I just, yeah, let's move, I would say let's move forward in support of it.
I have a question. So, does Janesville have it as a voluntary or a mandatory?
It's required. It's required.
So, are you thinking something mandatory for Oshkosh, or something voluntary, or?
Mandatory, and I believe that Milwaukee's was also mandatory. I can't remember if it was Sheboygan or La Crosse that I looked at as well. So, there's different variations on the theme depending upon the community. In Janesville's situation, they concluded there was, like, at least thirty percent of their vacant buildings were owned by entities or individuals outside the greater area. And this, this led to, you know, a couple of different add-ons with it as well, but essentially, it was, like I said, another tool to prevent that longstanding blight. I mean, recently, we had this fire, the owner of that High Street property apparently owns some other longstanding vacant property that's been deemed uninhabitable, but whether or not that's registered specifically is another issue.
One other item, and this may be, the police department, fire department can address it, would be, you know, what are the requirements? Do they have to have alarm systems in the buildings, even though they're vacant? Do they have to have fire suppression equipment in the building? Because, you know, those fires could be awful big if it's a empty, let's just take the OK Mark, for how many years it's had empty? You know, did they have to keep a fire suppression unit charged? I don't know. Or can we require them to do that?
You could even go back to the Buckstaff property.
Yeah.
This could have been a challenge with, we could have used this as a part of the Buckstaff.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And from the Pioneer to, you know, the House on the Corner, we, you know, we have a wide range of those kind of longstanding vacancies.
But I guess it comes down to how much can we force the owner, if he's got no money to fix it, you know, a home, what can we force onto them to fix? You know, it's not like our sidewalk, where we go out and take a picture of your sidewalk, shovel it, and put it on your tax bill. So, I don't know what we can, I mean, I, what kind of enforcement arm is it to this site, just registration?
It encourages turnover.
I think we're getting beyond, at this point, I think we're getting beyond what the original intent was, and we're actually beginning to get into the workshopping of this. So, I think what I would suggest is, is that the gentle lady suggests putting it on as a workshop item and move forward.
Workshop or, is it a general item?
I think this direction to city staff.
Discussion.
We've already done the workshop.
We'll talk about it among staff and bring it back to council, figure out the best method to bring it forward to you. But I think it's worth talking about.
I'd like to know what other cities do, as far as, once they've got the list, what do they actually do with it, and how actionable is, is the list? We found out there's a lot of properties that's next to impossible to even track down who owns some of this stuff, because of the LLCs and everything else. What action can we take if we can't track down an owner? Can we go in there and raise it as a city? This is the second chance for citizens to make a statement to council. Has anyone registered?
No one is registered.
And I will spare you all having to hear me read this again. We now have council member announcements and statements, recognition of work of Officer Kate Mann for Police Department's Santa's Workshop. Council member Peck.
This is something that was, that was brought to my attention, actually on TV, and Chief Smith and Officer Mann, if you could approach the podium, please. You've been called to the principal's office.
Um, the short story is, Officer Mann took it upon herself to do one heck of a community service project related to Christmas, and I cannot do it justice, so I would like you to explain to those in the audience, and I'm sure council's aware of this, but this is one of these great stories that we need to get out and let the people of Oshkosh know that the city of Oshkosh employees are not only employees of the city of Oshkosh, but they are involved in their community above and beyond their jobs.
So, Officer Mann, please give us the story of what you did.
Thank you. So, really, I want to say thanks to the community, too, because I couldn't do any of this without their donations, and it's wonderful seeing how we, as a community, work together to reach out to those in need, especially in the holiday season. So, this is my second holiday working in this position, and last year, I saw all of the donations that were coming in, and I quickly realized that we needed a different area to store everything, because it was just ending up in my office. So, we have the second floor upstairs, which is the old jail, so I thought, why don't we use that? And we referred to it as Santa's Workshop, and one of our coworkers had the idea of, hey, let's, you know, decorate it, and you can use it for a beyond-the-badge idea. So, basically, it's where I keep all of the donations that we use to give out in the community, and I felt that it's very important that we reach out to everybody in the community. So, we are giving gifts to kids, senior citizens, refugees, anybody who's in need. We're going to the warming shelter tomorrow night to take what we call blessing bags to give them, gift cards. We did shop with a cop tonight before we came in here. So, we're just really trying to reach out to the community and help those who are in need.
Thank you very much for what you do. And while we're at it, Chief Stanley, your cohorts are making their last run through the city this evening, correct?
Yes, sir.
And I know that that has been a very successful program, and I just want to recognize that, and since we're also talking about police and fire, we'll make the first, we'll make the first notice of this, that everybody mark your calendars for Saturday afternoon, March second at three PM at the Oshkosh YMCA for the annual guns and hoses game, where the Oshkosh Fire Department, the Oshkosh Police Department get together for a friendly.
[laughing]
Being on the ice with them, I know it's not that friend, no, for a hockey game to raise money. But Officer Mann, thank you very much for what you do. You are a credit to the city, and we really appreciate it.
[applause]
And Chief Smith, I see your buttons busting right now because of this.
If I could just comment the work that she's doing, she's kind of sold us off short on this. She comes with ideas, and it's my job to say, yeah, go forth and do, but what the work that she's done to make this happen is over sixty-one hundred dollars, in last And she's actively seeking out those organizations that can impact these families. And today we delivered to a, to a mother and her small son a Christmas present just because they need it. And when you get the opportunity to see the impact that it has on these families, it is well worthwhile. And it's just sharing a little bit of sunshine in people's lives for a brief moment during the holiday season. So she sells herself short in what she does. I just get to say yes, and she goes forth and does so. Thank you for the recognition.
And then just one last thing before you leave the podium. I believe it's three years, isn't it?
It is three years, yes.
I'd like to congratulate, I just want to congratulate Chief Smith on his three-year anniversary as the chief of police of the city of Oshkosh.
Thank you.
Just as an add-on to that, tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM over at the warming shelter, they're going to be passing out a lot of the, the bags, the blessing bags.
And gift cards.
And gift cards. So if you'd like to go on over, I'm going to be joining them. I'm glad you gave me the new time.
Yes.
It's at 6:00 PM.
And if you have families that are in need, we, we're soliciting that information as well. Just reach out to us. And I know many of you have contacts in the community that you, we have, we have stuff and we're able to help out. So we just reach out to us, let Kate know, we'll, we'll make an act of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Excellent work too, thank you.
At this point, I will turn it over to the city manager, Roloff, for his announcements and statements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I provided some information to council regarding, the staff has had discussions and been approached by the owners within the Aviation Plaza. For the, for a point of reference, Aviation Plaza is, talking earlier, the old drive-in theater area. It's bound by I-41 on the west, 20th Avenue on the north, Keller Street on the east, and South Park, Highway 44 on the south. The site's actually owned by multiple owners, one of which is Tom Masters. He's the owner of the Mineshaft Restaurant in Hartford. For over ten years, Mr. Masters has discussed the idea of an entertainment complex in Oshkosh similar to what he's developed with the Mineshaft in Hartford. He's been on and off with this. The last contact up until recently was probably about five years ago. And then it seemed that the idea went away. He, if you recall, he had proposed selling it to Sam's Club, and then that deal fell through. So he's held on to the property for a number of years. But now it sounds like he's starting to have some interest in possibly doing that and began discussions with staff on what would be needed to begin such a project. So staff had not really taken a look at it in that level of detail. But as they went through it, they identified some challenges that exist on this site that someone, some historical, some old rules from when they were, when the original development took place. The memo talks about those things, but specifically water, all of Aviation Plaza is served by one private lateral. That does not meet code, and there's a lot of practical reasons you don't want to have that. And anytime we've had that problem elsewhere in the city, we've had to get it addressed because it can become a problem. PSC requirements, each parcel must have its own lateral. So that's what we need to do because of PSC rules. Similarly, stormwater management, the stormwater management that was there was for the entire area. The DOT, when they were widening Highway 41, actually took some of that out because it was along the Highway 41 corridor. So there's that issue. And since then, stormwater quality requirements have all come into play, as council's well aware. Off-site storage is no longer permitted, so each site needs to address their own. So none of the parcels have site water quality, and the stormwater quantity is undersized right now. Sanitary, similar thing with a private lateral. It's not prohibited, but it can cause some practical problems, and we're aware of those issues. And so that's an issue. The parking lots, they need to get redone. There's also the accompanying stormwater issues with that as well. Driveways are not code compliant. If you, if you look there, there, there's no aprons and the sidewalks don't blend well with them. So that's an issue that would need to get addressed. And then lastly, the soils. Somebody mentioned it was an old drive-in theater. And fill was put in back there. Back then it was just, you know, anything that would work would be thrown in there. So there's concerns about what the conditions of the soils are. Those are typically things that are listed as a extraordinary cost. This group inquired about the possibility of TIFs to address some of those issues. That's an issue that at first I was very hesitant about because along Highway 41, the need for TIF and things like that aren't as, aren't as needed generally. But these issues are there and they're legitimate. And so we don't have any information other than the information I put in that memo. They want to present a TIF application, and I think they plan to do it sometime after the first of the year. And then they would have to begin the process that's required. I don't have any opinion on it yet at this point because we haven't seen anything. But I know that staff has verified that these issues that I just described to you are legitimate. So that's, that's really the, the underlying nature of their request. Alan, I'm not sure if there's anything else that I, that I missed or glossed over too quickly.
Maybe just a reminder that the parcel was developed maybe as a common plan, but now it's split amongst three owners and five parcels. And that complicates the redevelopment of all those parcels because they're all intertwined. So that's something that we even have to work through. I look at that as another impediment to redevelopment for that project.
Council's previously asked that when something like this comes up, offer the opportunity for a developer to make a presentation, for lack of a term, a first pitch at it. They are willing to do that, and I made that suggestion. And they, they quickly accepted that. And I think they would like to make a presentation to council on the first meeting of the year on January 8th. Not a workshop, just a, a brief presentation. They're working on things. I'm not sure if they're going to be ready with their TIF application. They'll probably be close, but I can't guarantee that they'll be ready. But between now and then, they'll have more time to, to have this gel and be able to give it to you so, so you can at least get a first look at it. But I want the council to be aware of it as soon as possible. Now, obviously, you know, now it's going to, the buzz is going to get around. I think for the most part it's been fairly quiet, but I think Mr. Masters, you know, he's indicated he's genuinely interested in doing it this time. So I think we just ask that we schedule that for a presentation on January 8th, if, if council's amenable to that.
Councilmember Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Those of us who were on council for a while, remember he sung and danced this about five or six years ago. And the project never went forward because he didn't have enough money into the skin and the game. If he's only going to build a restaurant, I ain't interested in a TIF for a restaurant. It's got to be a lot more than a restaurant. Also, what, I find it interesting that, you know, we, you brought up during the budget that staff was going to be looking at that Aviation Plaza for possible rezoning or re-whatever. And now all of a sudden this plan comes forward. That's kind of interesting. So I, I guess I would say we walk very lightly on this project. I don't have a lot of confidence in it. He would have to really show something bigger than a restaurant because I'm not going to support a TIF for a restaurant.
And history goes also, his, his history in the city of Oshkosh also goes back to the 100 block.
Yeah, yeah. So I think there's a lot of issues with this one I'm not very comfortable with.
We're open to listening.
Thank you for the feedback. I'm going to jump to number 37 just because it, and I probably should have put it in that order. We are proceeding with that. My belief is regardless of what happens with this idea that Mr. Masters and other folks, there are one of the other owners for the J.C. Penney lot, they're looking at something as well. Long-term, regardless of what happens here, I think we still need to go through that whole process because if this doesn't go through, something else needs to go through. We need more flexibility out at that site. When you can't even put, for example, a Subway restaurant on this site, but you can put an office building, it just doesn't jive.
Wasn't it designated several years ago for economic development blight or something?
Whatever happened to that?
The airport zoning dictates what uses are on the property. So that's the part I think is really holding that property back is what kind of uses you're allowing.
The airport overlay.
You are correct, sir.
But didn't we get some designation though? I thought there was some designation several years ago.
No, I don't recall that.
What we did, we did move part of the airport zone, so at least part of it was out of the airport zone. And that is developable, but that's only the top maybe 200 feet of that lot. Everything else is still in the airport zone that's really restrictive. So we haven't, we did change it a few years ago, but not nearly as much as we should.
But not blight, not in terms of blight or anything.
I think we have to get that area rezoned, it's been sitting idle for better than a decade.
So we've contracted with Mead and Hunt, and Mead and Hunt has a lot of airport zoning experience. I know they've done a lot of work throughout the state. So we've, we've brought them on. It, it really is coincidental, but I think we need to proceed with that regardless. And even though, I think at the time we put this into the budget, we weren't aware of Masters at the time. We need to do that. So I've, I've got that issue.
Mr. Roloff, regarding this airport zoning, can we talk to our friends on the other side of Jackson Street?
Absolutely.
To get maybe some funding to, to share the cost of this?
We've had that conversation at the staff level. I will, I'm not holding out very much hope.
Because any development that goes in there will be a benefit to the county as well.
And we are technically amending the county ordinance that the city then adopts. So you are correct, it goes through the county. But this is, they look at this as a city issue, unfortunately.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
And we will again.
Couple other items, and I think I'm going to have Mr. Davis talk a little bit about number 34. The memo is in your packet in terms of the analysis that we've done of comparing our single-family residential lot prices and some of the underlying reasons for that. And Mr. Davis, too, you could just give a brief summary?
Yes. Briefly, we looked at all the available single-family lots. And there are several in the city of Oshkosh, and there are several outside in the surrounding communities. They all have different characteristics. But we do have available lots in Oshkosh in just about every price range in northwest, west, and south. The question is, from my perspective, why does it cost so much to develop a lot in Oshkosh? We know what, approximately what Oshkosh costs are, but we're told that it's much cheaper to develop a subdivision in the townships and other communities. So I think we need to do a little more research as to what is special about Oshkosh, or maybe we just don't know what the, the facts are in the other communities. So we're actually proposing that we do a second part of this study where we'd look beyond Oshkosh on costs and figure out what we can do to better compete for future single-family development and potentially lower development costs in Oshkosh.
Question, Mr. Davis.
Yes.
Thanks, Mayor. So I don't know if you saw recently Minneapolis actually removed the single-family zoning from their ordinances as a, as a recognition of the limitations for affordable housing and the impact to the minority communities. I am not suggesting that we go that direction. But what I would like to know is, as, as your staff is looking at that, are you also going to be looking at, I think we've talked about this a few times, reducing the minimum lot size? Is that something that we're examining in terms of the cost for development of lots?
Off the top of my head, we were looking at the public infrastructure that goes into the lot. But now that you mentioned the size of the lot, we can definitely look at that as part of the scope of the project. We're actually hoping to work with East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission in 2019 so they can survey all the communities within the, the region so we could get a better idea of what those parameters are for affordable housing. Because when you do the math in Oshkosh, if you're spending $35,000 to $45,000 just to put public improvements in, and then you have to buy the land, and then there's some off-site improvements, and then you could easily be at $50,000 before you even start building a house. And it's pretty soon it's not an affordable house. So that's, looking at all those features, the land would be part of that analysis that we wanted to do.
If you did that, at least common denominator, I think you'd find the correlation between the lot sizes that more asphalt or more concrete, more pipe, it does, there is a correlation with what you're saying.
But in, in some communities, and I think you guys have already talked about this, that they're looking at putting like more than one single-family dwelling on a lot or allowing for that smaller lot size. Some of those other creative things that allow for more of that feel, but not necessarily to that scope.
Yes, yes. The planning department's been looking at several ways to encourage more affordable housing in the city of Oshkosh. And while I was more focused on the infrastructure side, there are things you can do on the development regulations that can make a property more affordable. At this point, I still want to make the, compare Oshkosh to townships and other villages and cities to see just what the infrastructure costs are. And then we could also take it to the step beyond that and see what we could do for development regulations to make it more affordable, which would be, say, the, the second phase of that study.
Phase two, sure.
Okay. Some of the other memos that I have in your packet include our annual audit contract. Schenk has been our auditor for a number of years. And the other firm that's actually been interested in recent years has been Clifton Larson Allen. Well, I'm happy to report that because of their merger, we will be using Clifton Larson Allen effective January 1st, but it'll be Schenk, Clifton Larson Allen. Having the continuity with everything going on with our ERP implementation, I think Ms. Larson felt that was the appropriate thing to do, and, and I agree with, with that assessment. We also have a memo in there regarding our cooperative purchase of computers. We're using the state contract. And then Mr. Davis has the Oshkosh Corporation update in there. The city hall meeting room scheduling. Hopefully, I, we have every reason to believe this is the last council meeting year. And I've heard from a couple of you that it does take away your mojo. This is not home, this is not our home field. But we'll be back in the council chambers based on everything we're hearing from the contractor doing the elevator project. We'll be there for January 8th meeting. And then I believe we have the final welcome to Oshkosh video. And Jake was waiting to queue it up, so please start it, Jake. Thank you. And this is the last of the five.
Oshkosh, Wisconsin is an economically thriving city with development and new business continuously on the rise. Oshkosh has the resources that businesses and entrepreneurs need to reach their goals and find success, and is the perfect place for a business to call home. The city has an impressive portfolio of top employers such as Oshkosh Corporation, Bemis, Bor Imprint, and UW Oshkosh. The Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Corporation preserves existing companies, fosters new business, and promotes the quality of life in the area. Oshkosh has evolved from its early days as a lumber town to include a variety of industries. Manufacturers produce vehicles, paper, packaging, and steel products. And tourism and entertainment businesses continue to progress in sports, music, hospitality, and more. Other areas of business include aviation, healthcare, logistics, and education. Innovative development is always happening in Oshkosh, offering businesses, entrepreneurs, and professionals of all skills new and exciting opportunities.
And that's the last, that's the last of our five videos. And they're all available on the city's website and will continue to do so. And that's all I have for my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Roloff. Before I ask Deputy Mayor Palmy to do a motion to go on to closed session, I'll repeat that this is our last meeting year for the year, our last meeting period. I wish everyone a happy holidays and a prosperous new year. So we'll see you on the 8th of January back in city hall. And with that, I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Palmy.
Thank you, Mayor. I move the following adjournment at this meeting. The council may convene into closed session pursuant to section 19.851(c) of Wisconsin state statutes to discuss the performance evaluation and compensation regarding the city manager and employee over which the common council has jurisdiction and exercises responsibility.
Give me a second.
Second.
Would you please take a roll?
Rosie?
Aye.
Yeah?
Aye.
Truman?
Aye.
Allison, Ashley?
Aye.
Palmy?
Aye.
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
I need a motion to, to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.
Aye.
Adjourn.